I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We appreciate it.
I'll move.
Thank you, Sylvia. Second to Judy, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Allen Fair with a motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda.
Hello.
Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one here from the public to comment. Move on. Reports. Friends' report.
We have a lot to update everyone on. So last week we had our joint meeting between the Friends, Davenport Public Library and the Capital Campaign Committee. And we had our paid consultants from Library Strategies come down. And we had lunch. We talked about status update, timeline, our goal on how much we want to be raised before we officially launch our public phase of the campaign. We received a really nice training on how to make the ask and broke down them in groups to do some skills practice, which is also called role-playing, but at Wells Park where we call it skills practice. To practice making the ask. We are still, one of our campaign co-chairs is still dealing with some family issues, so unfortunately Greg wasn't able to make it. But I think that we're starting to build some great momentum. Later this week, I'll be reminding the other campaign co-chair, Megan, to send out a list of everyone that we've identified as possible donor. So that way we can get feedback from both the Friends and if anyone from Capital Campaign hasn't already shared that yet or given feedback on who we should ask that they will have opportunity to do so. We also talked about naming rights and we will have, I believe we have a motion on your agenda. We basically decided that we'll start naming opportunities at 25,000, going up to either 240,000 or 250,000. Right now, we're just asking you to approve generally where the locations to be named are. And then once we kind of have those conversations, our feeling is that we would come back and get dollar amounts if the trustees also need to approve that. But we just wanted to have the Friends to be empowered, to have flexibility and let those conversations be a little bit more organic rather than saying, this is slotted for this dollar amount, no more and no less. Just because we don't have a great sense of what, you know, we'll be able to achieve in terms of that. So I'm really excited on that front. Also, on the Friends' front, we have finalized our draft of the revised investment policy statement. We did not present that at the last Friends' meeting last week because of time constraints. So that's something that we'll be going through at our February meeting. And then hopefully ratifying, that will be a nice step because that hasn't been done in a while. And then, like I shared, I think, last month, that we'll probably go out for RFP on our investment management services later this year. We have a lot of irons in the fire right now, so we're excited to be making these improvements.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions? Were there comments regarding the Friends report? Good work, Clara. Moving on. Personnel, anything, Matt? Anything going on?
Well, we're gonna do a review later today. There's no meeting other than that.
Advocacy, Malavika, it's not here, but she sent along a report. She said, "For the Riverbend Food Bank, the first volunteer event was the Saturday backpack party at Riverbend on the 5th of January. Great opportunity to directly interact and show commitment to our community." They're willing to explore, this food bank's willing to explore possibilities for us to share library materials, information, et cetera. And she's had some things here, you know, why sign up for the volunteer activity? Because the food bank gets an accurate account of volunteers that are coming from an organization and helps them keep their statistics. And it might help for any kind of reporting and advocacy events that we might want to take up in the future. She said there was a total of 25 of us went from Davenport Public Library on January 5th. Seventeen members of the community participated. Of those 17 were members of the community. All of the volunteers from the community got back in touch with me and some of the food bank did some later. They expressed a desire to do it again along with us. And almost all were doing it for the first time. February 2nd is the next backpack volunteering event and she has shared this signup link via email. And finally, Orchestrus Feed America. It says, "Symphonies help volunteer donate their time under this voluntary program across the United States. Need to investigate if libraries have something like this. If not, then need to think of a name. Maybe like Feed and Read or Read and Feed." So that's the advocacy.
We need to work on that.
Well, that's, yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Director, your report. Amy?
I don't think I have too much else other than what's in the report. So Brittany Peacock.
Brittany?
Brittany is our new community outreach supervisor. She started with us right after the first of the year. So, I don't know, I can put you on the spot. Do you want to share a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I didn't prepare anything. But, yes, I'm Brittany Peacock. I started my journey at the age of 16 with libraries. I started my small hometown library at Page. Got my degree in history and sociology from college and then decided I needed to be back in libraries. So I went back to school for my masters in library science from LSU while I worked full-time and not pleasant as a youth services librarian and manager of that department. And then now I'm here with you guys. I'm really excited to be here and start reaching out to the community and doing some great programs.
Great, welcome.
I know I've said probably more things than you're interested in about the QC Beach Launch Party, but I think it's gonna be fun. So it's free, down at the Army, Friday evening, February 8th, 7:30 to 11:30. We'll have six of the artists that were selected for the site, which is our streaming music site. And they will be performing. Free charge, cash bar. Should just be $100. And just as an FYI, I'll be out of town next week, so Lexi will be in charge. Are there any other questions about anything else that you want?
Just don't forget to leave Lexi the magic wand. Anyway, okay. Any questions on the director's report? Moving on then. Under new business. Approval of the change in the library circulation policy to have juvenile materials be fine-free if the Rivershare Consortium votes to make this recommendation. Have a motion in that regard?
Hold a second. I guess, two questions. Is there, do we have a timeline when Rivershare might possibly vote on this?
It's on their agenda for their meeting this upcoming Thursday.
Okay, okay. And is there a rough idea how much dollars we might be giving up?
It's right around $10,000 or $11,000.
A year? Okay.
So I checked with the city finance director and I think I shared it in the last meeting. They, he said that, you know, the city doesn't impose fees for things without a purpose in terms of recovering costs, things like that. So we felt this no longer was serving a purpose, which we don't really feel it is and we feel it's really creating a barrier to use of the library. That it was okay if we made that change.
Okay.
I guess just my mention, you may know or maybe not that the, actually the fines that the library collects go to the city, not the library. I don't know when that changed, but...
Well, as I always hear, city money is city money. I mean, it all becomes part of the budget, you know? So that's why we wanted to check with them. And then our planned rollout would be for National Library Week.
Which is for
So that is about April, early, early to mid-April. So we would like to have, you know, roll it out as a group, again, all the Rivershare libraries. The reason we feel it's important for everybody to do it would be, you know, if we do and Scott County doesn't, then we have some patrons who use the Scott County library, but we also have a lot of Scott County patrons who use the Fairmont branch. And so are people gonna selectively go and check out items knowing which ones are fine-free? And in terms of being a consortium, that's not really good. We really kind of need to all have some of those same basic policies, especially for the libraries that are really in close physical proximity. Clinton and Muscatine, that's a little farther away. Somebody's not gonna necessarily drive to a different location to take advantage of that. But we really felt it was important that we all do the same thing in this instance.
Would this be something where you might like a city council proclamation for the week? And then a local library, would that be appropriate?
I think, yeah, I think it'd be great to have a proclamation for National Library Week with council. We can
And announce within it the
Sure, okay.
I'll ask whoever, I don't even know. But I'll ask whoever and see if we can get that.
Okay, and we can write some language up. Sure, sure.
So the motion is to approve a change to the library circulation policy to have juvenile materials be fine-free if the Rivershare Consortium votes to make this recommendation. All those in favor of the, oh, ready for the discussion? I guess, just to make sure, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone? The motion carries then. Next item is a motion to approve change to pay grade for IT supervisor, customer services supervisor, and business office manager and facility supervisor to that of supervising librarian with the change to take effect at the beginning of the next pay period. Are there any motion in that regard?
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
I guess, could we maybe have a little explanation?
Sure. So these are positions that, where the duties and responsibilities have changed a lot over the years since those positions were created. We've made some adjustments to the IT supervisor position and the customer services supervisor position. I think we made one change maybe four years ago to try to get those salaries a little closer to where we think they should be. For example, the customer services supervisor, when that position was created and she was hired, it was as kind of a supervising clerical position. We had just the main branch in this small Annie Wittenmeyer branch and she supervised seven or eight employees who were all full-time. And now she supervises like 15, full and part-time employees in three different locations, manages our circulation policy, deals with our collection agency, all those kinds of things. And so we just really don't feel that we're compensating that position the way it should be. The same with IT. That position was created out of, when we had two vacant computer tech clerks positions at the same time, we realized that we needed to have somebody who knew more about IT supervising that is, you know, computer needs have changed over the years. So we took both of those clerical salaries or technician salaries and we raised one a little bit and we lowered the other one a little bit. And that's how we came up with a supervisor. So if that position was ever vacant at this point in time, I don't think we'd really be able to fill it with somebody who's qualified in the whole wide aspect of supervision. So in the same with the business office and facilities manager position. That used to be really the administrative assistant to the director, you know, in the days before computers and they were, it was really very clerical. And now Casey manages our finances for us and, you know, does the accounting, the bookkeeping and works with purchasing and all those kinds of things. And I just don't think we're, and supervises are caretaker staff. So I just don't think we're fairly compensating those positions. We haven't really done anything about that in the past because we don't have any money to do anything about it with. So with the other reorganization, we, there is a small amount of salary money left over. The city budget manager said we could make use of it in order to make those adjustments.
Just one question I had. Is this actually a change in pay grade or just?
Well, the way they, the city does it is Yeah, the city, they, so everybody's at a certain grade. Your position's at a certain grade and that indicates how much you get paid. So we would move those positions to that, to that grade level. Because it's, that gets you on a whole salary scale, you know? So there are 12 steps within those grades. So we're not, we're not intending to make a one-time change. We're intending to put those positions on that grade so that 12 steps will be in order into the future.
Do the job descriptions and responsibilities get updated too with the change?
The job descriptions and responsibilities, those have been upgraded fairly recently. Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, we're just trying to get the pay grade to equal what those responsibilities are.
Motion on the table is to approve a change to the pay grade for the IT supervisor, customer services supervisor, business office manager and facility supervisor to that of supervisor and librarian with the change to take effect at the beginning of the next pay period. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve the following areas as options for naming opportunities for the Main Street Library renovation project. Those being the children's area, first floor meeting room, teen area, lower level meeting rooms, large study rooms, and the small study room. And that as the campaign proceeds, the naming opportunities will be discussed individually with donors making significant gifts to the campaign.
What'd you say the range was again?
25,000 up to 250,000 is what we're targeting. So small meeting room would be 25 grand and then hopefully children's area at 250.
So we already have some sense of
We have a sense, right.
Okay, alright.
It's a little bit delicate because SRA came in at 240 before we had set our naming rights. And so we want to be really respectful of, you know, one of our first and our largest donors, not alienating them on naming rights. And so we just want to have some flexibility and have some nice conversations.
Understood. You have to do that.
We have a motion in regard to this item.
Some will move to approve.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the areas for naming rights opportunities. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item. Review of the ADA checklist.
Those are those amazingly long forms.
I don't think I was thorough. I wasn't thorough on that.
Why don't we really need to do it?
So review, review of the checklist. And so having a library fill out a checklist, there are four different priority areas that they have. So that, this is just the priority area that we selected at this point in time. As part of our accreditation, we need to fill those out and have the trustees review them on like an annual basis. We'll, we'll, you know, so next year at some point in time, we'll fill out the next variety of them. Deals with entrances, other types of access. So I think it was, it was a good exercise. I was surprised that, I wasn't surprised that, you know, here at Maine, we might have had a few things in our ADA restroom that might need some changing. But it was really pretty limited. I was a little surprised, like at Eastern, that's our newest building. And there were a couple things where it looks like we need to take a look at whether or not it's possible or we're meeting the standard or someone in a wheelchair would be able to, you know, get in far enough under this thing so that they can use the faucets, things like that. So we'll take a look at some of that. Mostly where we're not meeting the standards is in some of our signage. That's a pretty easy fix. Or, you know, we have to move a coat rack down, you know, six inches or something like that.
Is there, so city, I presume somewhere on city staff, probably at Public Works, they have somebody who is an ADA compliance expert?
Yes, it's actually through Civil Rights. And so when we were looking at our renovations, we had somebody from Civil Rights come over and walk us through this building in terms of where did they see, really see the problems and make recommendations for where would, where do we spend the dollars that we have with the renovation for the ADA improvements that are gonna have the biggest impact on users? And that's where we came up with making the two restrooms on the second floor compliant. So, and it's also city HR, I think, is where the other person is.
There is actually money in Public Works. I think that's a fairly new thing, but they deal with, that's, I think Trishna, she just joined Public Works last year. Or, you know, so in terms of looking at compliance for buildings, that's actually, there is a piece of that in Public Works, which might not supersede what's in Civil Rights Commission, but there is a piece of that as well. And I don't know, I know she's new to the staff.
Okay, yeah, and I know that there was somebody in HR who used to do some of that
And then I don't know.
as well. So, so I think what, you know, we work pretty closely with city facilities maintenance and so we can, you know, ask them some of our questions about, you know, are some of the pipes underneath, again, underneath the sinks where we have the on-demand water heaters? And is, or do we have exposed pipes where somebody could get burned potentially? So we want, we'll have them take a look at some of that for us and make sure that we're meeting the needs of that population. But for the accreditation requirement, we need to just certify that the trustees have reviewed.
So do we need to approve this individually by building or just do one lump approval of, because I noticed there was one for each location?
I think you can do a lump sum that's, you know, and say how gracefully that you have reviewed them. Yeah.
Well, if everybody's comfortable, I'm over to approve the ADA checklist.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve the ADA checklist. Is there any further discussion?
This seems like a lot, but it's really not compared to what you expected.
In terms of where we had some issues? Yeah, well, you know, I figured at the branches we probably would be 100% because, especially at Eastern, because it's so new. But I guess it just shows that it's really easy to, you know, miss out on things.
It's like 30 pages.
Well, not even having to move the elevator, was it?
Also, they change, I mean, they have regulations to change.
Yeah, yeah, they do. So, but overall, I think we are very accessible. At least the restrooms, that's the part we look at.
Yeah, you even went down to section 3.40, which way the color papers should have off the roll.
Something else next year.
Switch direction.
Who doesn't like that? I don't agree with that direction.
We have Judy.
Do you do it under?
I said I don't agree with it. I just change it.
We do have a, just for future, so we have a library safety committee and they walk through each building every year to make sure that we're keeping aisles clear, doing all that kind of stuff. And they look at some ADA, you know, things as we do that as well. So we're going to task them with doing the checklist next year.
Is there no further discussion? A call for the board. All those in favor of approving the ADA checklist, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Thank you. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Amanda. Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next item is to approve the 2019 Strategic Plan Implementation Plan. Have a motion in that regard. I move. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. A motion and a second to approve the 2019 Strategic Plan Implementation Plan. I'm aware of discussion.
Amy, you think we should pay close attention to it?
A lot of it is continuing things that we started last year. Some things to look forward to this year, the implementation of a digital library card so that patrons can sign up online and we can provide them access to digital services and they never have to, you know, come visit the library. Working in, doing that, so to make, you know, eBooks and all those kinds of things that somebody really says, you know, I don't really have a need to ever visit the library because I'm just interested in eBook or other kinds of e-services. We can do that.
That was one I had a question about. Would that mean right now there are certain databases that you could only use from the library?
There are, and those would still stay that way. Yeah, because those
That does your cost.
That's dependent on our licensing agreement. Some, like Ancestry, they won't license for remote access because they want to be able to sell individual licenses to patrons or to, you know, just regular customers, which they're always advertising for. So, so for some things, we just, we just don't have that as an option, so that they require it in libraries for some of those databases. We're also looking at ways for, to auto-renew library cards. So that way patrons won't, you know, come in the door and think that their library card is good or try to download eBook and think that their library card has not yet expired and will auto-renew those and send out a notice letting the patron know that, send out an email or letter or something like that. Probably a letter because then if it's returned to us, we know that the address isn't good anymore. And then we can automatically update the database on that just to make it a little easier for folks. Clearly, the new vehicle for our outreach services will be a big priority is that we hope to get on the road by the end of the summer. So we're pretty excited about that one.
Have you named yet?
Well
Have a friendly name?
We have a tentative name for it. The tentative name is the Owl, the Outreach Wheels Library. We haven't committed to that yet, but so far that's
I was going with Bob the Bookmobile. I was a record mobile.
So we've contracted with DMW Design. They're the same groups that worked with us on our rebrand. They're the same groups that worked with us on our rebranding to work with us in designing the vehicle wrap. And we shared the concept of the Owl with them. And so, you know, we're still open for ideas, so we'll see if they might have some other ideas as well. And then one of the things that we really want to do this year, probably later in the year, is to create some ways to evaluate a lot of what we've done with this. So we're working on a lot of additional partnerships. How do we evaluate whether a partnership is successful? And what sort of metrics go with that? So we're going to be working at doing a lot of that kind of work as well.
Yeah, I was interested in the one about exploring funding options to increase weekend and evening hours. So that's, I hope that...
And Marion probably knows more than I do about how the city budget forecasts are like.
Well, you know what? I actually think they may end up being better than originally thought because it looks like the sales tax, the originally, I think it was looking not so good, and maybe it's looking a little bit better now. That's the last word from Brandon. So, you know, there is a draft budget, but, but I don't think it's quite as... They were looking in the fall that this is not going to be a good year coming up, starting July 1st. But I think they're feeling like now, maybe things are better.
Okay.
And this is stuff from the state.
Yeah.
Really looking at stuff from the state.
Yeah. I mean, the first thing we need for ongoing increased funding is stability, you know? And so this will be our, I think, our third year in a row without a cut, which is really excellent compared to what it has been, you know, previous to that time, where we were always looking to make up for losses and how are we going to adjust to that? So having, having some stability in the budget really let us look at, you know, community outreach and some of those other kinds of things that we can do that are rearranging and budget neutral. Additional hours always, always comes down to additional operating dollars for the staff so we can be open, so. Which is not to say it's not impossible, but, so.
But that's one thing that would be particularly good, just so we can have more common hours. We don't have confusion over who's open when.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions or comments regarding the motion to approve the 2019 strategic plan implementation? Now a call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Amanda? Amanda?
Yes, I gave an aye, sorry.
I'm sorry. Must have missed it. Okay, anyone opposed? There's a single, no one? Motion carries. Moving on to old business. And there's our closed session to evaluate the performance of the library director.
Could I bring up a subject before we get, go to that? I realize this is off the cuff, but I guess I feel strongly that we need to state publicly that we're opposed to the proposals in the legislature to reduce the funding that the state, the backfill funding that the state promised when they did their property tax reform. And so I think we as a library, because it affects us, because it will affect the property tax levy and everything else, I think it's important for us to state our position on that. So I make a motion that we...
We can't do that, it's not in the agenda, but we put it on the agenda for next...
Okay.
All right, yeah. Steve knows his words.
But...
I understand, I understand. Okay.
I'll draft up some language by then.
Thank you, Tom.
And you can do that legally?
Well, sure, we can, we can express our opinion as much as anybody can.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm not questioning.
Just like the council.
Curious. That's right.
Would you please read the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I had your head right. Read this and then pick up with two.
Okay. I move the board hold a closed session under chapter 21.5.1.
Aye. I'm sorry.
21.5.5. Open the open meeting slot to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session.
Thank you.
And I do have to take word to request closed session.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Tom.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Well, returning to open session, after having a closed session to review the library director's performance. And having done that, I would appreciate a motion to approve the evaluation of the library's performance.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Judy. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the evaluation of the library director's performance. I'd say very good. And so with this, another discussion. Now a call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the library director's evaluation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
How about a motion to adjourn?
Oh, thank you. We're going to say, yes. We have a motion to adjourn. I guess, okay. Okay, thank you, man. I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Bye, phone.